Tonight is Tuesday, March 25th. The time is 6:32 and it is time for the City of Lawrence Common Council Code and Rules Committee calling the meeting to order at 6:32. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Thank you for joining us tonight for our Code and Rules Committee meeting. The scope of the meeting tonight is to talk about what we know regarding predatory rentals and to start the conversation about how we as a council can possibly address it. Sure, it feels like a David and Goliath situation because this problem has exploded since 2019, but we believe we owe it to our constituents to try and at the very least have this discussion. Housing is a social determinant of health and well-being. Housing also impacts education, public safety, and economic stability. We're giving our housing to out-of-state investors and negative investors who don't have a vested interest in our local community and our tax dollars are leaving with them. We owe it to our community to start this conversation, to brainstorm potential solutions to this crisis here in Lawrence, so let's begin. Oh, and we have a quorum. We have our entire committee. I don't have an agenda to roll off of today.
Okay.
I mean this, but. Roll call. Kristi Kron.
Carlos Jennings.
Terrell Giles.
Liz Missouri.
Let the record show that we have a quorum. There is no unfinished business. We do have our new business that I just mentioned. And let's begin.
So, we're going to discuss the information around reducing predatory rentals in the city of Lawrence and I'm just going to start off with a little story which is two professionals in a subdivision in Lawrence are renting a home. They pay $1,800 a month, almost $22,000 a year for their rent. They would like to buy a home, but every time a home goes up for sale, before they can even contact their bank about a mortgage, the house has been snapped up with cash by an investor. Unfortunately, this couple's experience is not the exception, but the rule, it seems. This is a problem. Why? $15 to $20 million is leaving central Indiana every month, going to out-of-state investors, out-of-state landlords. These investors prioritize profits over community needs, often neglecting maintenance of properties and evicting tenants, and these investors reduce options for first-time buyers and these investors drive up rental costs. So just talking, just to introduce what is a major concern of me, went to a presentation by this Brendan Ballou who wrote this book, Plunder, and it really scared me about what's going on in our community and would like to do something about it. Now, we have in attendance Ally Brown, a City of Indianapolis councillor, and would you mind coming up and telling us your viewpoint, please?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much, councillor. I'm Ally Brown. I am the Indianapolis District 10 councillor. I'm honored to serve the majority of the city of Lawrence. One thing, so this is a passion of mine, talking about protecting homeowners, improving the quality of life. Currently, I'm lucky enough to get to run the YMCA here, but prior to that, I worked with seniors and people with disabilities, trying to keep them in their homes in some of these areas, in other parts of Indianapolis where there was a large number of predatory homebuyers coming in. So before I talk, in full disclosure, I want you all to know that I am a renter. I am one of a handful of elected officials across the county who is a renter, not because that is the easiest option for us, but because right now, it's the only option. It is very difficult, as Liz mentioned in her letter, to even compete or think about buying a home in Lawrence. Lawrence is a wonderful place to live. It makes me very excited that people want to live here. However, we're facing a problem that we're seeing across the city and frankly, across the state. When it comes to predatory homebuyers, what they're coming in, these large rental companies are coming in and purchasing as many homes as they can for cash and then turning them around. Now, I want to make sure as we talk about this, that when we're talking about the rent, these companies, we're not vilifying renters. Renters give back to the city in numerous ways. There's bad homeowners, just like there are bad renters. So oftentimes, that's one of the pushbacks I get is, well, renters don't care about their community, but I can tell you, as somebody who gives back all of my time to the community, I deeply care about my neighborhood, my house, and the people around me. So what we're seeing is an issue not just with the purchase of homes that we would consider starter homes. As somebody who lives in Winding Ridge, that's where I live, that's where I rent, there's a lot of homes in there, but we're seeing it all the way through, all the way up to Geist and large homes and these rentals. But there is a problem. There's a shortage in homes of all sizes and it's kind of the same way we talk about jobs. So if you've ever heard the ABCs of jobs, the goal is always to get somebody a job, a better job, and then a career. And we need to look at housing the same way. We need to get somebody a place to live, a better place to live, and then a permanent place to live, whether that's like they decide they want to be long-term renters or investing in a home. And the problem is, we have a lot of people stuck in that first and second. With the homebuyer, with these predatory homebuyers coming in, it limits the amount of capacity for somebody to move up into that home. My husband and I, we love our home, we love our neighborhood, but you all know, and for the sake of those who don't, we have an eight-year-old boy and he gets more things and louder and more rambunctious and we're going to need more space, right?
And bigger.
He's getting bigger. He's getting so much bigger. And like a lot of millennials, we're looking at multi-generational housing, moving my mom and my stepdad in to live with us so we can both take care of them and then in turn, they can help take care of our little boy. So homes that we're looking for are, you know, you're looking for that perfect home, but every time we get ready to, our realtor sends us one. Within 48 hours, we're trying to coordinate so we can go view that home because we have full-time jobs and our realtor's trying to do showings, but by the time we get there, oftentimes, there's a cash offer on those homes before we could ever get there. So as somebody who's in that, I guess, that B situation, looking for that C, it's impossible for us to move up to that C because they're raising the price, they're making it impossible for people who may not have the 20% down, who may be looking at USDA or FDA loans in there, they're competing with veterans in that space. But if we don't move out of our home, right, we're in that B level, it's a great starter home, how are we going to get people out of that A level from apartments? So as much as we need entry-level apartments, entry-level housing, we need that next level, we need that third, and we also need to look at what we're doing to support our seniors as they retire and start thinking about, you know, these houses are too big for us anymore, we can't maintain them, we can't afford them, property taxes are going up. What are our options then for them to then downsize? And then how are they going to downsize when you're looking at homes that are $1,600, $1,800 a month in rentals? That are, are those size homes, when they bought a house in the 70s, paid $300 on a mortgage, it's paid off, they're, how do we get convinced them to move into a downsized home to make the bigger home? So it's a multifaceted problem and it's being made worse because of these predatory homebuyers, right? And now, we're not seeing it as much in Lawrence yet, thank goodness, knock on wood, but in other places, when these homebuyers see a neighborhood, around Fountain Square is a good example, if everyone's familiar with Fountain Square. It's a very cool place to live, right? It's extending out Fletcher Place, all that's a very hot place to live, but for a long time, that was very low-income housing, right? You had houses in 2015 listed for $30,000 and $40,000. And a lot of people who lived there had lived there their whole lives. This is also happening around Arsenal Tech. My experience was working near Northwest, particular around, we're 16 Tech Riverside area, and these people have lived there their whole lives. For a lot of our seniors, their homes are their wealth. So they have a home, it's paid off, that home may not be the fanciest place, but it's valued at $30,000, $40,000. And then these renters come in and these flippers come in and they buy the homes next to them or down the block and all of a sudden, you see a home that they bought for $30,000, maybe even on HGTV, listed for $300,000. Now, that home sells and then another flipper comes in and that home sells, and that's enough to start tricking all the algorithms in the assessor's office to start raising the value on all the properties, start raising those taxes. So then these predatory homebuyers will start approaching these homeowners and they'll do it through calls, through emails, through pieces of mail. I went to a meeting in near Northwest and a woman brought a shoebox full of pieces of mail that she had been solicited, wanting to buy her home. And when they turn that down enough, then they weaponize systems that we've put in place to protect homeowners by weaponizing the Board of Health. So the Marion County Board of Health is not driving around looking for falling gutters or things like that, they respond. So what these people do, will send a street team out to go out and say, oh, there's chipping paint, there's a broken window, there's fallen gutters. So now you have a senior who's been living in their home that there was, it's truly valued at $40,000, their property taxes are rising, and now they get a letter from the Board of Health saying their paint is peeling, it's probably lead paint, if you don't get it removed and treated and all this, we're going to start doing fines, if you don't do the fines, we're going to put a lien on your house and then we're going to sell it at tax sale. And so then these companies can come in and buy lots of these homes at tax sales out from under seniors who are using that as their wealth. Now, I know a lot of our neighborhoods, if you go east of where we are, are relatively new, we're not seeing that as much, but I know it's smaller effect of this is happening in old Lawrence, particularly like in your area, councillor Giles, that area, we have all these amazing, smaller homes that were built in different boom times for the base and we're seeing that if you pull the records of some of these, right by Harrison Hill, you're talking eight to 10 homes out of 12 are rentals. And they're working on that. They're not the nicest homes always, but they're using them, they're churning through our immigrant population, they're churning through our lower income, and it becomes this cycle because as they raise those rents, and I can tell you, our rent has gone up like $600 in the past eight years. It's insane. And it's, but it's more cost-effective for us to continue to pay that higher rent than it is for us to find a house and move. But they do that and it becomes this perpetual cycle of poverty because if my rent has gone up $600 a month, that's $7,200 that I could be putting away in savings to then have a down payment to pay for a house that I now can't. So you start living in this cycle where it's like, we sure would like to buy a house, but we can't. And we sure would like to move up so another neighbor can come in and have our house, but we can't. And so it's just this cycle. So I am not sure of the solution. And the solution for Lawrence is going to be different than the solution for Indianapolis just based on the size, based on the difference, but I can, I want to applaud you for talking about this because it is so important and affects every stage of life. If we want to attract the best and brightest minds to Lawrence, we need to have the opportunity for them to find a place to live, to have a family, grow that family, invest in our schools, invest in property taxes. One thing I don't pay is property taxes, right? So I am not giving that back, right? I'm paying rent.
Yeah.
I pay rent. But we're not giving that back in, right? They're paying a different level than I would pay as a homeowner, these renters. So you start talking about like investing in the community and investing in that, and every time we write that rent check, it's gone. There is no investment in our future. Now, I am two, I am, I am paying, paying in taxes. I am two weeks away from turning 40 years old and I would like to be a homeowner. I'd like to have a home that I can pay off. Be nice by the time I'm 70, so I'm talking about retirement. It'd be nice to have a home that I can then use as generational wealth to create and hand off to my son or have a home that he can stay in, depending on his thing, depending on how his life goes, but this is just very important. So as we look at this, what I strongly urge you is look at the whole problem, but knowing right now, the whole problem, you can see the bleeding in these predatory buyers coming in here and picking up homes.
I got so much to say.
Well, then, before you say it, okay. When you said, Ally, when you said, when you said $600, what came to my mind was that when they, when predatory lenders keep stacking that monthly, that disallows you to go buy a steak at a restaurant here in Lawrence or maybe, you know, participate in other things that reinvest back into the community. That's it.
And when you're in like a Winding Ridge, and I can tell you, and you can look at the things put out, the Fair Housing Association, something else I didn't mention, most of the homes are either owned by Progress Residential or they're owned by First Key or one of these other large ones.
Yeah.
American Homes, yeah. They end up basically getting to set that rent price across the board because it's not, back when there were limits on how many homes you can own for rent, which was taken away sometime in the early 2000s, back then, you're dealing with each individual landlord. So there wasn't this conglomerate that could set these house prices, which makes it so there's not really even a cheaper option for us to look for in our neighborhood because we can't even buy and compare when the majority of the homes are owned by the same.
So, I've got so much to say.
I'm glad you did.
I guess I, I kind of want to start at the beginning because this is a conversation that's going to go on and I feel like I have opinions that might be over the place. I want to start with the beginning for me. I'm from Oakland, California. All my family is there besides my mother and I. And if you know anything about that place, I have seen my family benefit from the rise. I've seen my family get victimized in the 90s, what you're talking about, because my grandparents' generation died, then they left it to my mother's generation and some of them did well with it and some of them totally have fumbled it and are in their 70s and still, if you look back to some of the problems they're struggling with, it was because of the fumble that happened, family rifts, all kinds of things, I have seen it. I also was a teenage parent and I was good in sports and my high school didn't want me to quit, so they hooked me up with a mentor and he owned 80 properties in Fountain Square. I mean literally from where the jail is, New Jail, all the way out to Morris. And what he did for me, I bought a Carlton Sheets thing in 1997 and he convinced me to come back from college and instead of going to college, like, I mean, I invested my money in real estate. So I owned properties on Virginia, Eastern, Grant, Union, all by the age of 23. Then I lost it all, okay? And so then I went to go work at Horizon House and HIP, Homeless Initiative for Prevention, Horizon House. I was at Horizon House before they had a homeless shelter, when they just had left from the church in Nazarene. John Hay was my director. I was on the first homeless street outreach team. Why? Because I had to put people out because John told me, either I'm going to pay you, Terrell, or I'm going to let that lady live there for free. All up and down East Street, Haven, all of that. Now, here's the benefit. I also was able to build my wealth, beginning of my wealth, off of that real estate as well. So I know old classmates that were squatters in Oakland, you know, so I understand the dynamic of it completely, but what I've come to find out is something that I'm a really good representative here in Indiana told me a long time ago and I didn't understand. Sometimes a good politician does nothing. And the reason why I say that is because when I do one thing, I create another problem. So when you say protecting homeowners, I don't think, I'm concerned about that because I look at my own property and you would say that 50%, I think it's fair to say that 50% of the folks that would probably be interested in purchasing my home would most likely be an investor. I purchased my home during the economic downturn, this house that I'm here having in Lawrence. And when I get ready to sell it, I would like to get the most that I can get for that home for generational wealth. The reason I went back to saying that I did choose college and this is because there were sacrifices that were made where I was buying clothes from Goodwill but paying a mortgage. There were sacrifices made when I was driving an Escort and paying a mortgage. I believe that there are so many other things that we can do to strengthen our neighborhood to make it more attractive so that everyone, no matter what facet of that call you're in, you can benefit from. I hate the fact that we have all these out-of-state landlords, but I feel like here in Lawrence, we kind of miss the ball because in 2013, American Homes was buying up everything in Winding Ridge. That was over 10 years ago now. In Brookhaven, there were landlords that were very politically involved here. I said some of their names, we would know them, that home, 30, 40 properties. And wanted to sell those homes to normal folk, but I couldn't afford to buy his whole package for his retirement. And so, but who was able to come in there? Cash deal. And now I see that man going to Florida playing golf, enjoying his life, he still lives in Brookhaven, but he's less stressed and he brings me tomatoes. So I don't want to do anything that restricts anybody in that call because unfortunately in America, capitalism and housing are closely connected. And I'm very, very concerned that we'll do something that may help one person, one group, but shortchange another. And ultimately, we have a national housing stock issue. All these issues we have are national issues. Some of the issues you speak of probably need to be addressed at the state level.
Yes.
You know, as far as, you know, increasing more housing. Here in Lawrence, we got a sewer capacity issue.
That's true.
That we have space to build, which I'm big for and pushing. We have opportunity to build senior housing once we get our sewer fixed, which then in turn, the people who live on Arlington, it's beautiful homes, on 46th and Emerson, Arlington, Lawrence Township, beautiful homes. Are those neighborhoods necessarily conducive for a young family with children? So one of my concerns when I read this was, if I kept my neighborhood's rental, would that make my neighborhood more enticing to live in? If everybody cut their grass and it was just the greatest neighbors, I still have a food desert, I still got abandoned Walgreens, I still got scary gas stations, I still have, you know, I mean flooding streets, you know, I mean like, I don't know where, if it was in a nice shiny neighborhood, maybe would make it more attractive if you kept the rentals down, but I don't know the numbers, but. And then my community's got to be, I don't know, it's got to be higher than what we've been seeing going around.
I would agree with you, nothing happens in a vacuum, right? There are a million contributing factors into why things are happening and what the root of the problem is, but what I would push back is if we continue to allow these out-of-state landlords to continue to buy homes, you're going to end up with a situation where the entire city, entire neighborhoods are just rental neighborhoods. And when you talk about building a community, that's about caring about your neighbors. So even when you worked for the landlord who owned all those homes, he cared about that community, right, because he cared about those homes and he wanted those to rent. When they own all the homes, it doesn't matter because there's no other option, it becomes a company-style town. So that would be my pushback is, just because somebody got theirs doesn't mean, you know, like, that's the best option.
How do you take property, how do you take ownership from someone?
Oh, I'm not suggesting that in any way, shape, or form.
Or how do we limit, how do we, I mean, how do we fairly limit who I could sell my property to?
HOAs do it, don't they?
Covenants.
Huh?
Covenants.
No, I'm saying like there's covenants to homeownership. I'm no attorney, but there's covenants, right? And so I'm saying, like, this cap, so like right now, my home, let's say right now, I decide to, to rent it, right? I'd say I decide to rent my home. I could never sell it to another, with some of these laws being going around, I couldn't sell it to another investor.
It depends, it depends on whatever.
Right, that's what's going around, you know.
Well, like, is it Fisher, I apologize, Fishers is putting a limit on how many per area because of, because of this.
Right, right, right.
I mean, I would strongly urge if you're a homeowner and you're choosing to sell, to look at who you're selling to if you want to continue to build a stronger Lawrence. Ideally, you're selling to people who want to live in Lawrence.
And that's great, I mean, I agree with that.
And I know our limits, I know our limits as, trust me, I know our limits as a city and what we can do versus the state versus federal. I mean, we can't stop people from being solicited to have their homes bought because that's federal and we can't.
I wish, now, can we, I think we can do something about that at state level right now.
That's the state level, but that's not us.
Watch this, I'll say it publicly, I'm a business owner, right? So I owe taxes and taxes. So these people call me 150 times a day. I mean, they blow me up trying to buy my house, you know, here in Lawrence, I'm awful, right? And I asked the ones, why are you doing this to me? My house is not for sale. And they said, they said, you're on the tax list. So I understand that, right? But can't we, like that?
That would be a state issue and you have to take that to the Attorney General because then you're talking phone fraud and stuff like that and phone calls persisted, that's the Attorney General. When you talk about mail, you're talking the federal government because that's your control, it's the mail, right? They set a lot of the rules and covenants for how you buy and purchase property in the state of Indiana through state. So there's a very limited in what we can do, but I think just bringing this up in consciousness and starting to talk about how we can build a community that wants to build that net, because this is how we build social safety nets, it's how we invest in futures, it's how we build stronger schools because we're weaving those communities together and it is not, it's far from the only problem facing us. I know that and nothing ever happens in a vacuum and everything is intersectional because a lot of this also comes from, and I can say this millennial, my generation taking out a whole lot of student loan debt that will probably never pay off, which makes it impossible for us, but that's because we were sold American dream that if we went to college, that would pay for itself and we'd be able to buy a home and that American dream's been pulled out from under us. So I would just say, there's just a lot in a vacuum.
That's why I brought up the part about buying clothes from Goodwill, right? So now I'm on the back end and I'm now, you know, ready to cash in on some of my investments that I made, you know, and so, and now I'm in a neighborhood and then somebody wants to limit what I can do, you know, I don't want, I don't want regulation to, I just don't want anyone telling me what to do, especially in a neighborhood where one of the reasons I bought in there too was not to be an HOA.
Yeah.
Right now, I come in with a big city HOA sitting over the top of me, you know, trying to put restrictions, I'm just nervous about that. I'm also want to talk more about like here in Lawrence, I don't know if we have any more land left, but there might be opportunities to rezone land, right? Rezone land and turn it more into housing options. The other thing is Indiana folks are going to have to start realizing that everybody can't have a half-acre yard and live 15 minutes in a body-mit circle, right? We got to start looking at, you know, we're becoming a mid-sized city to a big city, right? We have a state that other cities, the other cities around the state are losing their population to come here because we have the jobs, right? And so I'm more concerned about, instead of limiting what homeowners or people who've always lived here in Lawrence, I don't want to limit what my retired, my constituents are right now for what could potentially occur. I want to plan for the future without putting any extra burden on the past. I also understand when you said about the rising cost of the homes getting reassessed, we went through that with my family in California. Grandma outlived Grandpa's retirement. We had to, when, and the houses cost went up, right? You got a house you bought in 1955 for seven grand and today it's worth 800,000, right? You know, and so as family, we had to make some choices, right? As a family, because this was a family home, right? If Grandma's got the house at 80 and she's outliving Grandpa's retirement, I would imagine this is off the term generational potentially. Or you got people who are real low-income, they don't have anything, and then that's where I believe that the city should be setting aside monies for, like we talk about the gutters covering off, the broken glasses, those different things. We need to be doing things to make investments for grant opportunities and stuff like that. And I know that, you know.
It was done in the past, right?
Yeah, I would strongly urge the city of Lawrence to redevelop their Community Development Corporation, which was dissolved under the Elaston administration because they can help in that way.
Absolutely. I love a good CDC.
I love a CDC. I mean, like I said, this is a multifaceted problem and there's tons of, tons of different things that go into it.
Would, would we be able to have, and we can have people come back? We ready to, Ms. Allison Cole, if you could come up and introduce yourself, please?
Thanks, Allison.
Allison Cole. I live in Kensington Farms. I've been there nearly twenty years now. Um, and I've also, um, I have my master's in public affairs, policy analysis, and my area of expertise is housing. Been doing it for a long, long time. Know John Hay really well.
We had to blueprint the, the home, when we did the homeless count. I was boots on the ground.
Good for you. So I'd like to, um, you know, Tyrell, you're, you're a good landlord. Cause you live here. And you care. But what's happening across America is that Wall Street is literally coming in and plundering our housing stock. So I have here, um, a press release that was released by the National Community Reinvestment Act Coalition. Who puts out an analysis of HUMDA data, Home Mortgage Disclosure Act data every year. And just last fall, they wrote in their press release to their study. Um, instead of cooling off home values, prolonged pandemic era low interest rates spurred a goal rush. Of investors, both large and small, buying US homes as they borrowed at super low rates against their existing homes. The housing finance system failed to adapt to this power shift from traditional owner occupied borrowers. Towards medium and large scale landlord-ing operations, leaving vast unmet demand for affordable option. Housing options like manufactured homes or smaller mortgages. Once used to fund construction costs, mortgage debt now serves Wall Street needs. The financial tail is wagging our household wealth, wealth dog. And they go on to say that as, as proof, the number of loan application reports. Records reported in twenty twenty three dropped to eleven point five million, down sixteen million. Down from sixteen million in twenty twenty two and twenty six million in twenty twenty one. The marks, this marks the lowest number of home buyer applications since the Home Mortgage Disclosure Act reporting rules. Were enhanced in twenty eighteen. So literally the system is broken. This is not a state issue. This is a national issue. And, um, so in Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh did a major study of this problem. And here's where I really, um, I am a homeowner, want to see my, my neighborhood and the value of my home maintained. But my heart really goes out to the renter. Because in addition to these corporate landlords who have no in-state property thing. People can call and call about the roof that got blown off by the last storm, water leaking in, mold growing. And no response, and no response, and no response. And when they do take it to a health and hospital, they're immediately evicted. That breaks the, the state tenant landlord state law, but they get away with it. And so on top of paying an exorbitant amount of your income towards rent, let's be clear. There are two hundred and twenty thousand households in Indiana who make only thirty percent of area median income. Renters who make thirty percent of area median income and seventy five percent of them are paying fifty percent or more of their gross income in rent. We have a hundred and thirty thousand unit deficit of affordable housing for our lowest income.
In Marion County?
Statewide.
Statewide.
Statewide. So they're paying an exorbitant amount of rent. To just keep a roof over their head and that roof is leaking. And, um, and that means they're, they're not getting healthcare. They're not feeding their kids. They're, they're doing two and three jobs just trying to keep it going. And then, and then the landlord evicts them. An eviction is a red E, which means no landlord will ever rent to you again. My fear about this crisis isn't necessarily about keeping my value of my house. It's about the increasing homelessness rate. So, um, and in fact, we know even in our study, um, that was done by our Fair Housing Coalition. That, you know, there's census tracts here that were once owner occupied, now totally rental. Like sixty five percent of the housings, housing is rental now, had been homeowner. And forty percent is owned by out of state investors. It's a disaster. And in Philadelphia or in rather Pittsburgh, the overall annual eviction rate. In, in their county is eight percent, but Vinebrook, one of the big investors, attempted to kick out an absurd forty three percent. Of their tenants in twenty twenty four. SRF's rate was twenty eight percent and a, a third investor was twenty four percent. It is impossible that as the company claims they use eviction as a last resort. When their eviction rates are several times the countywide average. And our own Judge Kim Bacon says these investors, eviction is part of their business plan. So it's a huge problem. I say, I, I don't know what to do with this ten percent and limiting. It's like that horse has left the barn.
Well, that's what I know.
But what we can start working on are housing conditions. And demanding. That our housing units are in good, no one should have to pay. Fifty, sixty, seventy percent of their gross income on a piece of shit. I am sorry. Right? And then that injury to insult to be evicted.
So I agree with you so much on that. And so, but isn't it because we don't have, we don't have enough. Section eight vouchers here in state and city?
Don't get me started on section eight. No, we do not.
So, so that, so that enough affordable housing would be there to make the market compete.
Landlords don't have to accept section eight housing in Indiana.
Right, right. So that's good. So I'm glad you said that because that's where I was going. So we're here in this. I was people shocked. I can't because. I almost didn't come, become a cheerleader. And Ally, you know as good as I do on this one. How many years ago was that that we tried to get the landlord, I mean, the, um, the, the, the eviction changed?
Well, four years ago, the city of Indianapolis passed renters protections for the county and then the state.
So I was, so we here in Lawrence, of the, the problem, myself, mayor, the mayor, Lisa, Sean. We all went in support, you know, we were there with our, with, you know, we thought we got a victory. You know, we came back and had, you know, right? You were there, I'm sure you probably there too. And so, um, and then, you know, and then they changed it that way.
So there are some, there are some things that we could do. And so a couple, a couple of suggestions that I have are. Number one, I've, I've, we've looked at the Fisher's ordinance and I know their hearts in the right place, but I can't make heads or tails of what they're trying to accomplish. Okay. Charging a landlord two hundred and fifty dollars for not having an inspection, so what? We charge more for a traffic violation. Okay? We're gonna have to make it painful. We're gonna have to make it a pain point in their business plan. And, um, and again, what part of Lawrence is that ten percent cap? How does that work?
Well, that's where my stop was. Where do we divide subdivisions? Like you look at. You know, this Brookhaven is the hot point, this and that, you know?
But just let's trust that our community has been hard hit. And, and I, I keep looking for like where are there going to be solutions, but I had a, a couple of ideas. Number one. Uh, the Indianapolis Foundation has recently added a new housing, vice president of housing. Um, and they are very much committed to equity and fairness, uh, and so housing is on their list. And I, I really do wonder, Ally, if, if they could not bring some dollars forward to help us really do a comprehensive study. Way beyond what the fair housing did, which by the way, they don't get to do those studies anymore because their funding for that got. But like for instance, I can't go to Judge Bacon and say, hey, you know, where did all the evictions happen in Lawrence? I mean, she just, she just doesn't keep her database that way. But eviction labs, a nationalized organization does. And I don't know what it would cost for them to come in and to tell us where are our highest eviction rates? Where are our highest, you know, owner occupied rental rates? I mean, Amy's report only covered six census tracts. And I can't even tell if they're all in the city of Lawrence. Um, and it, it could start there. And then there are professors. I met a professor just on Friday at a grassroots community housing summit. Uh, her name is Patricia Basil. Uh, and she's working hard on this issue and, um, and she says that she's gonna start looking at, at some answers. And that would be, that would be helpful. So, I mean, it's not just enough to quantify, although you do have to quantify, right? Um, but I, I think, you know, we just need to be demanding and saying, um, going to community leaders and saying. We have a huge problem. Don't know how big it is, but it needs to be tackled and we need to start gathering information. And start to put it together.
What about the city master plan? You know, for the county?
Yeah, the comprehensive land use plan just recommends how land can be, should be used. It doesn't get into any detail about.
I didn't know if we had any zoning of land that we could change. Cause I'm looking at it by ability to provide more units, right?
Absolutely. And, and what both, and what both of these articles said, that the only answer to this is build more housing, which by the way. I was looking at the numbers from two thousand ten to two thousand twenty precipitous drop in the number of housing units built across the state. It is astounding. So we just need more housing. But what kind of housing comes back? You know, maybe, uh, housing in a land trust. Um, or cooperative housing or Habitat for Humanity. I mean. Maybe housing isn't becoming, isn't going to be the equity builder. Maybe housing is just about having a safe decent place to live and to raise your kids. There are things going around in other cities and other counties around the United States and worldwide. So there's a new effort where governments are coming in and saying our housing, you know, leaving it to the private market was a mistake. And so literally they're issuing bonds to build new housing. It's happening in Columbia, Maryland. It's happening. It's happening in Austria, Thailand, and it's a new public sector approach. To starting to build housing that has, that is affordable to a variety of people. And that there's some caps and some, and some limits.
We won't be building no nineteen forty five projects though, right?
Another idea that a couple of states did during COVID, Vermont took their COVID money and set up a. Um, a tenant repair program up to thirty thousand dollars to repair your unit. If you took that money, um, then you had to accept section eight housing vouchers. You had to be on the continuum of care coordinated entry. And the landlords came running. They loved it. Small landlords could really use some help in keeping their property up to code. Uh, Pennsylvania is looking at, and Vermont loved it so much that they then put, used their own state dollars to do this program. And Pennsylvania is looking at doing the same. And there's a proposed bill in Congress right now.
So you're, you're, you, you, you have a master's degree in this. This is what you do and you have the time to research. I would love for you to come back with a study from a red state that is doing something that you like, that is.
A red state? St. Louis, Missouri?
Well, you know, say if you look at, say, if you look at Missouri laws, Missouri lets the cities do a lot, like. So they're kind of separated. St. Louis is here, Kansas City's here and then the rest of the state. So it's a little different because I've done research on that.
You know, we're, we're in a.
The only reason I say that is because sometimes we hear, oh, what Vermont's doing. And I'm like, yeah, I mean, hell, I mean, but it's, you've been to Vermont? It's a long way from Indiana. You know, and so what I think to get something, what I would love to get excited about is something that. The folks, the powers that be ahead of me would like to see as well.
Well, maybe we could look to Ohio.
Yeah, just don't look at Columbus, because that's like looking at Bloomington in Indiana.
I, I, I'm here to say that I think that there are probably some local investors here in Indianapolis at least. Who'd be willing to maybe take a deeper dive into looking at this problem. And, um, you know, we're not in a political environment to change anything, are we? But that doesn't mean we shouldn't be prepping. We shouldn't have our facts straight. We shouldn't have the numbers. Um, and we shouldn't have some ideas.
I know right here in Lawrence Township, can't speak for the city of Lawrence, I know Lawrence Township, you may correct me if I'm wrong. Don't we have the highest density of units and apartments? I've heard, because I used to go to the post, a cafe that used to have, um, apartment round table. And I believe I learned that during that time period where we used to have the cafes that, you know, for all the apartments. We're trying to get communication.
Well, that would be historic because of the post.
Right. And so we, so we, and so, um, uh, I think when I, I brought that because if evictions are high in Marion County, they're high in Lawrence. If, you know, I mean, if, if, if rental rates are high in Marion County, they're high in Lawrence. And, you know, and so, uh, I'm not saying that that's not a problem that we don't have. I think that we've been addressing, um, here in Lawrence. I know since I've been on the council, we've put in, you know, lots of units here on the Ford. Unit, there's some housing going in with, off of, uh, what's that? Is that forty sixth? Uh, there's a newer Howard, housing addition. It's been up for the last five years or so.
Terminated forty six?
Yeah, so like, yeah. So that'd be fairly, you know, fairly new. I've heard a conversation about Midhofer. Is it forty, is it forty sixth and Midhofer? There's a big patch of land there. There's been developers coming in. Uh, at times over the years, the, you know, conversation. Um, so I want to make sure here in Lawrence at this meeting, I'm really big on making sure that we have the infrastructure to handle. The capacity.
You do, you need that, yeah.
Right. And so that's what, when you talk about getting ready and what we can do. A lot of times when these conversations come up, I go back to those things because I know that that's, we gotta fix that first. And I also believe that it's gonna be some sort of dense housing that's gonna help us, which I also know. Folks don't like to hear more apartments, uh, but sometimes you gotta feed the funnel on the box, on the, on the apartment in. To get the movement there. And I also know that we have a very aging, um, population of folks. That are in some of the housing that could be, that could be, that are good deal. And so again.
Well, yeah, the Pittsburgh article, the editor, this was an editorial and, and their final analysis was you gotta build more housing. And they conclude with, and that means among other reforms, less restrictive zoning, reduced regulations and more efficient permitting.
There you go. Those are things we can do. Permitting here in Lawrence is something that we need to work on. We've, we've not done well with that here, here in Lawrence. So I, 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 I'm glad I came and I'm really glad for the conversation and I hope that we can find some small steps. Walking towards. I'm, I'm for landlord registry and, and I've read a lot about them and, and I sponsored the bill on landlord registry. Eight, eight years ago, but the whole room filled up with my board folks fighting against me. This room, right? And honestly, and, um, uh, and how it was administered. So I've done some research on them in the past and, and when I did that, and they've had limited. Uh, what's the right word? Shaky results of how much they've made a difference.
City of Indianapolis has a voluntary one. I went and looked at it. There was nobody registered.
Right. So that was the question of how, what, yeah, the enforcement of it, right? So that's why I backed off. So when I read it all, I thought, aha, I got a solution for why people complaining, you know, I was having issues in Brookhaven. That time that things were changing. I thought I had a solution, but then I realized it wasn't. I had all these people upset and it wasn't worth it. They had no teeth. And so I'm, I don't have the time to do all the research across the world, but I would love to learn. And learn more about things that have teeth, that, that are less painful, that have teeth, things that we can do. Because ultimately, like I said.
And we could put some carrots out there too.
I'm all about clean water, how, a, a place to stay and clean air and a job. Those are the things that motivate me to come in here and do that. And so I appreciate you so much. Thank you for inviting me.
You're, we're not done. One more person and then we'll see. This is Debbie Hughes. Thank you very much, Ms. Cole. Debbie Hughes, President of the Oakland and Meadows HOA. So you wanted to speak.
You've got the floor.
Thank you for having me and allowing me to speak. I basically have lived in Lawrence, uh, in my home for twenty eight years. I have been on my board for twenty four of those twenty eight years. So I have a very, uh, understanding with my community. Been involved ever since I've lived here, involved with crime watch and everything else. Um, the issues that I have in our community is I have a list here of all the individual rental companies. There's twelve rental companies in my community. I'm not saying I'm against rentals, not at all. Um, what I would like to see happen is cap them. I have over twenty five percent of our community with a hundred and thirty one homes. Twenty five percent of them are rental properties. The problem that I run into with these rentals is they're out of state. Um, I have to reach out, out to them with, uh, problems that are arising in the community of not, of keeping of the home. I showed Liz earlier this, this evening, pictures of properties that I have that I've had to reach out to the, uh, investors. Of course, they're out of state. I send pictures to see, look, look which property looks like. They don't care. Um, that's the thing that I run into. Um, what I would personally like to see is a cap on how many rentals can be in a subdivision, or how many rentals can be in the city of Lawrence. Um, cap that, and go in and do the, um, registration keys. Um, I think if that's, hits them hard enough, that maybe they'll stop and realize what's going on. And maybe get a company local to come in here, look at their property, see what these renters are doing. I'm not saying all renters are bad at all, but there are a few select that don't care because it's not their property. And they don't care what they want to do. Now, we tried to do a, a cap on our, uh, properties in our community. I had to have a certain percentage of the homes in there to cap it. I had three individuals that I needed to cap this. One of them being a councilman, and the other one being a homeowner that owned two homes in the community. They were against it. It wasn't that I was trying to stop the rentals, I want to cap the rentals of how many we have in our community.
You was trying to get the CCR, I mean, to get, get votes to change the CCR, to adapt the CCR?
Well, we, we basically have to have a percentage in our community to cap. We could have capped it, but I had to have that vote in our community to be able to pass that to stop it.
You needed half, half, half?
I had to have three votes to get it, and the three votes was one homeowner that owns two homes in there, and one of our councilmen, he said he was against it. And it stopped it from capping how many rentals we could have. I have to grandfather in the rentals I already have in my community, so it wasn't stopping them. It was just putting a cap where we get no more rentals. And with these companies, I'm gonna tell you straight out, what these companies charge in the rentals of these properties in, on my community range from anywhere from sixteen hundred to two thousand dollars a month. That triples my house payment.
Right, I agree with you.
Yeah.
My house payment is, you know, it's ridiculous. And you've got people in there, just like she has said, they go hungry. They have to, to know what to pay to be able to pay their mortgage or their rent. You know, it's just beyond ridiculous. Um, I would like to see a lot of this stuff, physical inspections.
Yeah.
I had one property out here that had a mattress in her backyard for two years. You couldn't see it because it was a fenced-in yard. I finally had to get the Board of Health involved. The Board of Health came out. The owner of the property would not even enforce it until the Board of Health got involved. So, me personally, some of these things on here, I would love to see happen. I would like to see a registry list where they have, I mean, there was some homes in here that I couldn't even find out who owned the home.
Can I ask a question with the registry? Because you've done a lot of work. When you got your twelve people there.
Twelve individual, or?
Right, there are twelve owners, and I'm sure you contacted them and talked to them about keeping their property, you know, keeping their stuff up. What, have you had some positive responses from any of these folks?
Some I have, some I haven't. Um, what I, what I personally like to do is I like to reach out, being the president of the Homeowners Association. I like to reach out to the owners, myself. And, you know, give them a courtesy call or an email and say, hey, this is what's going on on your property. This is what's happened on, on your property. Um, basically, um, I, some I get a result, some I don't. Then when I don't get a result, I have to go to my property manager. I said, look, now let's send a violation letter. That's not only costing the HOA money to have to send all this out. That's why I try to do that courtesy call first.
Sure.
And then the HOA violation, is that about, that's a, assuming you're calling the HOA and not the Health Department, because it's a HOA violation and not a city violation?
It's, 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 uh, it's, it's, uh, the, the mattress was a, a Board of Health issue.
Right. So I'm saying, so that's why you called them?
Yes, I, that's why I reached out.
What I'm getting at is I'm wondering if increased code enforcement helps some of your problems in your community.
Well, I reached out to, I reached out to Lawrence, um, spoke with them about it, and, uh, they, they advised me to reach out to the, uh, Board of Health.
Right.
We, we basically, they, they did their portion, I did my portion of trying to reach the owner, um, and getting a resolution taken care of. Finally, it got to the point, point where the Board of Health had to get involved.
And they took care of it.
As soon as the Board, Board of Health got involved, oh, absolutely. They came out, um, and then they, they decided to show up.
So there's an argument on the books, and so that's, that would lead to my argument that enforcement and maybe us educating, everybody that's diligent, you know, with you and this stuff, but maybe educating folks to, to, to enforce, or maybe as a city, if we invested in code enforcement officer. Here, you know, I know here in Lawrence, if, we, we've had a lot of conversations over the years about code enforcement and code enforcement officers, and I mean, it's been a bit, so my thing, sometimes I'm listening to you, and I'm going, okay, do I need to cap, do we need to do something that dramatic, it's capping, you know, or is this really about enforcing what's on the books? Maybe we need to have better, uh, uh, I'm pushing for a better, uh, bulk trash, heavy trash pickup, because our heavy trash contract, I don't like it. So, uh, I'm seeing that, because, because right now we only got heavy trash twice a year, and when somebody leaves a mattress out, that mattress could sit there, where if I had more heavy trash days, you know, maybe we can address some of your, you know, I mean, some of your problems.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring something up that, that doesn't even pertain to this. We can't even get the city of Lawrence Police Department to enforce the codes that we have already on the books. Um, we're running into issues in the community with things like that. Um, so, I don't know what, getting them enforced...
An example that you would have of a code that you can't get enforced?
Okay, I have one home, um, in here in our community that, um, the vehicle has sat on the street for years, years. Um, I've, I've reached out to Lawrence, I've asked them to come out and tag the vehicle. The first time they came out and tagged the vehicle, the, the renter came out and was all upset that the vehicle was tagged. She called Lawrence back up, and she says, I don't understand why this vehicle was tagged. The officer that came out this time says to her, ma'am, I don't know why it was tagged either. It's plated and it's, you know, uh, legal. I don't understand why. It has sat in the same place for a very long time. The street is rusted where this vehicle has sat for so long. I have sent numerous emails. I have reached out to Bixby, I reached out to, um, huh, Klein, Klein came to a crime watch meeting, I spoke with him about it. I'm getting nowhere with the city ordinance, and it says in there that thirty-two, or thirty days, that vehicle has to be moved. At first, it says in there seventy-two hours, but I was told on that it has to be basically, um, it, it's, uh, like, the parking lot out here can't sit for more than seventy-two hours or park. But for it to be on the street, if it's, you know, um, it has to be moved thirty days. I have continuously and continuously addressed this. I have a homeowner that lives across the street from it, is an elderly lady. She has trouble backing out of her driveway. She has to back out three and four times just to get out. Now he has two vehicles that has been there for quite some time. Uh, the neighbor that actually lives next door to him can't even back out of their driveway because it's a blind spot. I'm not getting anywhere with it. So when you're seeing, you know, the codes and stuff, I can't even get them to, to do the codes that we have now on the books.
Well, I'm so glad you shared that, though, with, with us, and I'm not saying act like I'm, any of us up here are magicians or something, but those are things that we should be able to hold people accountable for and assist you with, right? And, and so those, and so those are the things that, uh, we can, hopefully, we should be able to do, uh, something about. Now, I don't know the rules about if the car's plated and all that, I don't know, but...
But your ordinance say thirty, it has to be moved every thirty days, or it's considered abandoned. Okay, when this has been here for, I mean, like I said, they, the last time it was moved was probably, uh, I would say August of last year.
But, but code enforcement would be useful for your community?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Ms. Hughes, thank you very much for speaking to us.
Thank you. And I really would like to see, you know, something, you guys work on this. I appreciate what you guys are doing.
I'm gonna get that car moved.
There's two of them, sir.
Okay, and so, but we, we have, um, we do not have people sign up, but would, um, Chief of Staff, good night, do you have any comments to make? Or Director Jim Perrin, would you like to? We have people in the audience.
If not, that's fine.
Yeah.
Just giving you the opportunity.
Don't get them off the hook. Come on up here.
Well, they were looking at us like...
Now, this is an opport, the point of this exercise is to get education and determine possible steps.
I think so. I'll make it real brief. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity. I think it was Allison, was her name? Yeah, she talked about a lot of the problems that we're facing. I think you said a hundred and thirty thousand units short of affordable housing statewide across the state, and, and that's different in every county, maybe in heavily populated metropolitan areas. It's probably much worse than some of the more rural areas. So, there's a, uh, there was an interesting editorial in Star, uh, maybe a week or two ago from James...
James, sorry.
And, uh, yeah, talking about this issue and ways that you can help alleviate some of these problems. Uh, I just want to clarify one thing. HOAs don't ban, uh, rental properties from buying those properties. What they do is limit their ability to rent them, so they can still buy those properties and, and be speculative investors. Uh, what, I know some of the, what Fisher's is doing is actually trying to limit who can purchase your property, and that's not what HOAs do. They, they just limit what you can do with the property once you purchase it. Just a clarification.
No, that's very good. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Rapp?
That's what we're working on.
Anything to add?
No.
Okay. Any, any last comments?
Okay, well...
Well, we have not solved the problem, sorry, but we will, uh, gather and determine what our next step is, but thank you, everyone, for your attendance and your input. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you so much, you guys.
So maybe we invite the new housing, don't they have, don't IHP have a new housing director or something like that?
IHP.
IHP, no, IHP does.